Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 23 city council meeting. If everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I would like to welcome our mayor, Gaylor Baird. I understand that you are going to be presenting the Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, members of the council. The Mayor's Award of Excellence for August is presented to Arborist Rick Kane of the Forestry Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. Rick has worked for the Forestry Division since 1978. He was nominated in the category of productivity by the Community Operations Forester Lori Gruber. Rick's primary job is to operate the large log loader truck and to be the crew foreman, and at the request of a former supervisor, however, he served for about three years as an administrative assistant and inspector for the Forestry Division. Gruber says Rick's duties included assessing trees, prioritizing the need for trimming or removal, and giving assignments to the crews. He also was in charge of ordering safety equipment and coordinating the servicing of vehicles, as well as payroll and other administrative duties. Rick preferred his previous job and was able to return to his regular duties this spring. Gruber wrote, "It is my feeling that because Rick cares about his workmates and city trees, he placed his personal desires on the back burner to make sure that the details were handled." Gruber also wrote that every member of the forestry team holds Rick in high regard, and he should be recognized for being an excellent role model and team player and for going above and beyond the call of duty. It's my distinct pleasure to present Rick Kane with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for August. Please join me in congratulating him for his hard work and deep commitment to the city of Lincoln. Parks and Rec Director Lynn Johnson would like to say a few words to congratulate Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to recognize Rick and express our sincere appreciation for getting us through what was kind of a challenging period. One of the things that we've been seeing with community forestry is an increasing number of requests for service, and actually, the requests, with every one of those requests for services that comes in, we inspect the locations, we go out, we visit the site, and we do an evaluation, and the quantity of those had exceeded what one person could do. So Rick kind of helped us get through that transition period, and we actually now have another full-time inspector who is doing some of that work. So Rick's willingness to step in, assist Bob Weyrick, who was the prior community operations supervisor, was significant at that time, and this is a very well-deserved award for Rick and recognition for Rick. I want to give Chris Myers a chance to speak as well. Lori Gruber, Rick's direct supervisor, is not able to join us this afternoon, but she shared some words that she wanted to have presented this afternoon.
Thank you, Lynn. Rick, I want to congratulate you also. I've had the privilege of working with you 35 years of the 43 years you've been here, so I appreciate all that you've done and continue to do with the Forestry Section. Lori sent me some words to speak on her behalf since she's not here today. Says Rick, "Congratulations on receiving the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Recognition of your dedication to your coworkers and your department is long overdue. You have been instrumental in setting the standard for the Forestry Section level of commitment to the public and Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Thank you for a job very well done." Lori, congratulations.
Thank you, Rick. Yeah.
I'd just like to thank everybody. I appreciate it.
Do you have a family member with you today? No?
Just coworkers are here.
Wait, all the coworkers! Yay! Yay! Well, thank you. I want to say thank you, Rick. You know, I grew up in Lincoln, and I can tell you that our tree canopy is spectacular, and I love our greenness about our city. I love our parks because they are certainly such an attractive place for families, for people to gather, and so thank you for your care and nurturing of making our city such a beautiful place.
Yeah, and I wanted to add something. In 1978, when you started with the City of Lincoln Forestry, I was one year past. In 1977, I attended forestry camp, and I ended up scoring second out of 131 campers. And so I wanted to say, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, very much.
I graduated from high school.
That's good to know. Okay, thank you all very much. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and after all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, just a reminder to the public, due to Columbus Day, Indigenous People Day, the city council will not meet on Monday, October 14th. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 3.
And I understand that we have some appointments to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees, as well as the Keno and Human Services and Board of Zoning Appeals. So Lori, would you like to come forward and talk about the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees appointments?
Good afternoon. It is always a privilege for me to have an opportunity to introduce potential trustees to the Board of Trustees. As you know, we require a great level of expertise and commitment and time to our board, so having an opportunity to introduce new trustees to you is always a pleasure. And so without any ado on my part, I know they'll tell you their qualifications, name, and address, and so I'll let them go ahead and do that now, but thank you for considering these nominations.
Ms. Bonsell, would you like to come forward?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the council. I'm Pritah Bonsell. Need my address? 7534 San Mateo Lane in Lincoln. I grew up in Lincoln, went through K-12 here, was away for 35 years with a career on the East Coast as a lawyer in the White House and a lot of different places, New York Attorney General's Office, was a U.S. diplomat, and I'm happy to be back in Lincoln for the last year and a half and committed to the health and well-being of our residents.
Well, thank you so much for your continuing service to our city and our county and our state and our country. So is, are there any questions?
Yay.
We're very fortunate to have you, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Thompson?
Hello, I'm John Thompson, 7975 West Yankee Hill Road in Denton. I've been a resident in the Lincoln area since 1997, currently serve on two nonprofit boards supporting their efforts, and would like to offer similar support to the Community Health Endowment. My background's primarily in investments, so any support I can offer the endowment in that area, I will.
Terrific. Well, thank you again. I know the Community Health Endowment has consistently been able to grow their investment, and it's because of the wise people that are on the finance committee, so thank you so very much for your willingness to serve. Are there any questions for Mr. Thompson? No? Well, we're all grateful for your time and effort. Thank you for coming down. Okay, on to human services.
Sarah Hoyle, Director of the Lincoln-Lancaster County Human Services Department, and it is my pleasure today to introduce Ms. Rachel Sirmick from United Way. She is the appointee for the Keno Advisory Board. The Keno Advisory Board, as you know, has used a startup funding many times for agencies. There are many grants, 15,000 and under. They may be many, but they are mighty. They do a lot in our community, they serve a lot of nonprofits, and Rachel is the perfect person to have on this committee, so I will let you tell, I'll let her tell you more.
Thank you, Ms. Sirmick.
Rachel Sirmick, address is 922 South 11th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am a newer resident to the community, hitting just about one year here, having been very excited to call this my home. As Sarah mentioned, I'm the Director of Community Impact at United Way of Lincoln and Lancaster County, where we primarily work with 41 funded partners who are providing work and support to our residents in three different areas of education, income, and health, and I'm excited for the opportunity to serve my community in this way.
Wonderful. Well, we are grateful. We know the United Way is so committed to so many organizations in our city and to their success and the community that they serve, so thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Sirmick?
I have a comment. Rachel and I have met a couple of times at a couple of events. She's already gotten herself well-integrated into our community, and we're lucky to have her. Thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Well, terrific. We're glad you're going to hit the ground running, so thank you very much for serving.
Thank you.
And Board of Zoning.
Good afternoon. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. I'm here on behalf of Tracy Edgerton. She is a current member of our Planning Commission. She's been on the Planning Commission for about two years now. She is not here necessarily mainly because she's an existing board member on one of our boards and commissions. We have a requirement to have a member of the Planning Commission to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and so she has gracefully been willing to take on that additional responsibility to represent the Planning Commission on the BZA. We're very pleased with that. She'll do a great job, and I can certainly answer any questions you have about her appointment.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much for representing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on any of these consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none.
If not, we can vote on these items. Items 1A through F were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 2A was introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by McGinnis, seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A and B together. They're the application of Bourbon Street by Single Barrel for Class C and Class E liquor licenses at 350 Canopy Street, Suite 120, and the related manager application of Heath McComber. I will note for the record that we did have a request to continue public hearing and action on these two items to September 30th.
Okay, so Teresa, that means that they don't necessarily have to be in attendance today?
Correct.
And do we need to have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to continue public hearing until next week, September 30th?
So moved.
I will move that.
Okay, okay. Moved by Washington and seconded by Christensen. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, is item 4C, manager application of James Rueh for Mid Plains Food and Lodging, Inc., doing business as Fat Dogs Lincoln at 3100 Northwest 12th Street.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
James Keith Rueh, 107 North Elder Avenue, North Platte, Nebraska. I've applied to be on the liquor license for Fat Dogs in Lincoln. Currently, we have Jeff Moore on there, and he's no longer with the company, so I have applied to be on that.
And I'm not familiar with Fat Dogs. Is that an existing establishment?
Yep, it's a convenience store out by the airport on 12th Street there, on the corner.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Rueh?
Rueh.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for saying that again. Thank you very much for coming forward. I knew, I was terrified I would butcher it. You know, there's usually some management training, management of things. You said Mr. Moore was on the license until recently. Have you done the training courses and gone through all that? Yep, and I have one more to come back October 10th here in town to finalize everything. Thank you very much. That was...
Terrific. Well, thank you so much for coming down. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, next is item 4D, manager application of Stephen Engel for Benchmark Redevelopment, Inc., doing business as Buzzard Billy's for a, at 247 North 8th Street, Suite 101.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Stephen Engel, 1621 South 27th Street, here in Lincoln.
Welcome. Tell us about your application for manager.
I am taking over for Roger Houghton, who's on, but dealing with some health issues and looking at possibly an early retirement, so, and been with the company for 20 years, and I'm blessed to know quite a few members of the council here. Armadillo eggs. Yeah. Hook you guys up. Love your establishment. Thank you so much, yeah. But been with them for 20 years and haven't had liquor violations since the time that I've been there, so.
Wonderful. Are there any questions for Mr. Engel? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
All right, next is item 4E, application of Code Beer for a special designated license to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 59 feet by 41 feet and an outdoor area measuring approximately 150 feet by 66 feet at Huddle located at 600 P Street, Suite 400, on Friday, October 4th, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m.
Hi.
Yeah, so Huddle just asked us, you know, Code Beer to serve our beer for their industry night. They have indoor space and an outdoor space for their one-time event.
Yes. I have a question. Will there be food at the event even if you're not providing it?
Um, no. They're not doing any food.
I have a weirder question. Who is that?
I'm Michelle Hamer, 5124 North 20th Street.
Thank you, Michelle.
Just kidding.
Okay. And is that customary, I guess a question to Jeff, or is that customary? Shouldn't they be serving food?
Requirement.
There is no requirement. Okay, I should have asked the people on the...
Jeff, for Patrick's City Attorney, yes, there's no requirement. We are giving them permission to serve liquor. There's no connection between the liquor license and a requirement to serve food. We have that for sidewalk cafes, but not for STLs.
Okay, terrific. Does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to testify on that item? I think I failed to ask that question. Okay.
I move approval of items 4C, D, and E.
I'm sorry.
I'll wait to second on that one.
Christensen moved approval, and Shob seconded it.
Okay, we need this side.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Shob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing ordinances, second reading. Item 5A is comp plan conformance 18017, declaring 0.53 acres of city-owned property generally located at the northwest corner of North 12th and Oak Streets as surplus.
Good afternoon. Dan Marvin with Urban Development. I'm here before on 12th and Oak being declared surplus. This is a parcel of land that was taken through the Planning Commission on September 4th and received a 9-0 vote. It's about a half acre of land. As you can see on the map here, it runs right next to Oak Creek, and it was acquired by the city back in the 50s. It was been originally identified as a substation location for an LES transformer, which they've declined and reviewed. They don't believe that they need that, so the property is being declared surplus.
Any questions for Mr. Marvin?
I have one.
Okay.
Yes. Do you know how the city acquired that property?
You know, we did ask that up there back in 1955. None of our staff was there, and I don't mean to say that as a quirky thing, but it is possible that it was acquired through a tax sale, but we don't really know, nor do we know exactly whether it was originally acquired by the previous electric company or if it was. But the records don't go back that far that we're exactly sure on how we acquired the property.
Okay. Because it abuts Oak Creek, is it in a flood-prone area?
It isn't. It is, there will be a conservation easement over that property.
Okay.
And it will diminish its value, but that's in conformance with the comp plan to put a conservation easement over that land.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Richard?
Will it be publicized?
Yes.
To sell, for sale?
We would, assuming we are granted the ability to surplus the property, we would advertise it and put it out for sale for people to acquire the property.
Okay.
And that is industrial, yes?
You know, actually, these are residential homes that are next to it.
I three.
I would say, I would say the land is a mixture of zoning up there. It has more the character of industrial, though.
Yes. All right, that's what I was thinking, but all right.
Any other questions for Mr. Marvin? Is there someone else that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next.
All right, next is item 5B, comp plan conformance 19011, declaring city-owned property generally located at 840 West O Street as surplus.
Dan Marvin with Urban Development. What you have before you is a small piece of property along O Street. It was acquired in 1995. It was railroad right-of-way that was no longer needed by the railroad. It is a triangular piece of property. It's within the flood area, so it would have a conservation easement on it, and we would be looking to surplus this property. It did go through Planning Commission on September 4th. Received a Planning Commission endorsement to surplus the property and be bringing that forward to you as well.
Any questions? Richard?
Looks like the city owns property across the street. Is that correct? Do you know?
This property?
Yeah, that's a recycling center.
You know, I did not check on that property to tell you whether...
Looks like it's all part of that railroad plat originally.
Okay.
Kind of went through that area.
Circle to the north of it.
Yeah.
Just seems to be parking lot for the recycling bins, just to the north of where you touched the map.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Marvin? Is there someone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Thank you very much. We'll go on to the next.
Next is item 5C, text amendment 19005, application of Civil Design Group and Olson Associates to amend Chapter 27.62, conditional uses, by amending Section 27.62.040, Household Living Use Group, to provide that dwellings are permitted in the B2 zoning district, including on the first floor, first story of a building, when listed as an allowed use under a use permit.
Good afternoon. Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group, 8535 Executive Woods Drive. Here today, and I'm joined by Matt Langston from Olson's. We were co-applicants on this. We both were working with the Planning Department on a couple of different projects that had a need for this. My specific example will be before you in a few weeks, but in order to make that project work the way the developer would like it to work, we found out that we would need a text amendment, and I think Planning did a good job in assisting us in being the primary author on it, and I think the primary things that were discussed at the Planning Commission and are within the text amendment are that this is restricted to the B2 area. It does not include the B1 and the B3 areas, which are some of the smaller neighborhood commercial areas. So the B2 areas are required to have at least five acres in size, and so these are primarily in the suburban areas, if you will, and for whatever reasons, back in the day, residential was permitted on the second, third, fourth, fifth floor, but never on the first. And so there are some applications where we'd like to see that done, primarily given the developers, or the center owners, a little more flexibility on the ability to do that. And so that is the reasons for the text amendment, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Yes, Richard?
This would only be allowed if it was allowed in the special use permit.
Right. So if a B2 area has residential units in it today, then they would be allowed to do them in, on first floor. If a B2 area does not have any residential today, they would have to come and do an amendment to their use permit to request residential uses at all. So it's a good question. That was also discussed at the Planning Commission. So if they have residential, then they would be allowed to do it on first floor by right now, but if they did not have any residences permitted, they'll come back to the Planning Department. Yep, so.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to testify on this item? Please come forward.
Hello, Matt Langston, Olson. We believe that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This just simply gives the developers more flexibility in areas where residential use is a conditional use. So anytime that is applicable, they do have to come to you for approval first. The R2, or the B2 zoning is a transitional zoning that's usually right adjacent to residential anyway, so with that, are there any questions?
Well, thank you very much for coming down.
All right, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, let's go on, please.
All right, next is item 5D, amending Section 9.36.110 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to firearms in unattended motor vehicle. Unlawful to prohibit the storage of unsecured firearms in unattended motor vehicles. I will note for the record that we have a request to delay public hearing to October 21st, but if there is anyone who wishes to speak on this item today, they sure may do so.
And I'd like to offer Roy an opportunity to say a few words on this ordinance that he has introduced, and then we will start with the public hearing.
call constructive criticism, and it's pretty obvious that the ordinance as written is not appropriate for long guns in storage in vehicles, and that's one of the reasons. And there may be some other modifications done based on input from the public. And so there will be another public hearing on the 21st of October, and the legislation will be prepared into the public before that hearing.
Thank you very much, Roy. Now, is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this ordinance that had planned to come and testify? And just to remind you that you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Melody Vaccaro. I represent Nebraskans Against Gun Violence, and I live at 4401 South 54th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. We are pleased to support this ordinance from Senator Christensen about safe storage of guns in cars. We actually have nearly 700 postcards from the public in Lincoln to pass on to you, thanking you for taking a first step today and urging you to keep going, all the way towards passage and, you know, even more, of course. And I did want to say we had a couple concerns, and we've talked to Councilman Christensen about some of our concerns. And one of the concerns is if you lock a firearm in a glove box, that is the first place someone goes when they're pulled over by law enforcement. So we thought that might be something to consider in the amendment process. And then the word occupied, we just, we wanted to define what it means to be occupied or unoccupied. If there are minors in the car, we would like that car to be considered unoccupied, unless there are adults of age and not prohibited persons. So just maybe define that out a little bit more, but otherwise, we're really excited about the work, and we look forward to keep working with Councilman Christensen on the ordinance. And here are these postcards. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down to testify. Is there any questions for Ms. Vaccaro? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there someone that would like to testify in opposition? Please come down and state your name and sign in on the pink sheet, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Andy Gick, 2918 South 13th here in Lincoln. I understand the desire to keep a weapon secured in a vehicle locked in or safe, but let me ask to put this scenario out. You are a legal gun owner. You have a CCW. You have your weapon locked up in your vehicle securely, and a member of your family who is not carrying a CCW, does not have one, borrows the vehicle for whatever reason. Through no fault of anyone's, they're not aware that your weapon is there. They commit a traffic violation. And no offense to the young and dumb and stupid, which we all have been once, a young officer catches you committing that violation, pulls you over. First thing that pops is this big flashing CCW owner, probably a gun there. So he's coming out already hyped up. He just knows. So he says, with his gun, hand on his gun, "Where's your gun?" "I don't have a gun." "Where's your CCW?" "I don't have one." I see nothing but negative going from that by someone who did nothing wrong. However, we have now made an innocent person a criminal through the desire to lock weapons up. Now, you've taken one step further. You've given that innocent person a record. You've put in a public record of that family owning a weapon. Why is it every time a drunk driver kills someone, all safe drivers have to give up their, don't have to give up their cars? What's the difference? I'm not into conspiracy theories, but if using this can make a people criminal and effectively own a weapon public record, this could very easily lead to a former Texas congressman's claim that we are going to take your AR-15s and your AK-47s. Gun confiscation is becoming the word of the land. There's a great deal of, because you're a gun over, you might be guilty of something, owning a gun. So what you're doing is you're telling us, "We're guilty, but have not committing a crime." I have noticed that fewer than 1% of gun violence occurs and are committed by NRA members and CCW permit holders. Yet, daily, nine traffic accidents are fatal, and of those six involve teen drivers. Has anyone considered making it illegal for a teen to have his cellphone locked up in his occupied vehicle? For that matter, how many of you have been guilty of using your phone, texting or talking in a non-hands-free manner while driving a motorized vehicle in the city of Lincoln? It seems we love to ignore the phrase, "Thou shalt not be infringed upon." Most people in this room right now have no clue what it costs to protect and preserve the Constitution of the United States and the Bill of Rights. I do. I have seen my brothers die. I have helped fill the body bags and load them on the choppers. Until you have done so, be so very careful as to how you degrade the flag and the Constitution that I and millions of others have sacrificed to prevent. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next testifier, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Trevor Reilly. That's T-R-E-V-O-R. Reilly is R-E-I-L-L-Y. And I'm coming down here today to oppose both these firearms ordinances, so I'm just going to take this opportunity to touch on both of them. I know I have a friend who's going to be speaking on some of the statistics as well that would lie with this reporting, but I'm in opposition just because I don't think it's going to be effective. I don't think it essentially will be enforced. And there's a lot of provisions of selective enforcement that if both ordinances pass, they can pass, they can basically pass on a lot of externalities on to people, the poor and minorities. Both groups typically have a worse relation with the police, and so if they may not be able to afford a safe or something like that, they actually might be a little bit more afraid of reporting it. And so I think that ultimately what Lincoln will see, no matter what groups it does affect, is that we'll get less information about what we want to know about. I think there will be less reports with it, and that's the central thing. I think that a lot of this came about because Nebraskans Against Gun Violence did eventually get beat on, beaten, excuse me, on having the safe storage mandated when we were here about a year ago. And now it's kind of divulged into they got a task force, which has some findings. I read the report, and I think that kind of always rounding up to say almost 50% of juveniles, kind of casting it, is a little bit dishonest, and I think there's a lot of other, I think there's a lot of other motives that are vile that try to be attributed to people who come out in defense of this, saying, "No, it won't be effective. It won't prevent all these thefts." I think that actually voluntary measures, like what the Lincoln Police Department has done with their 9:00 PM lockup, has been much more effective in getting out the message without this compulsory ordinance that I think, you know, come game day, people come in from all over the state, how are they going to know that Lincoln has this control ordinance, you know? Selective enforcement, if somebody's already being belligerent, or they're already a little tired or something, you know, now they get on the cop's bad side, and they're from out of town, so maybe they get it enforced against them. They get hit with a citation. They don't get put in jail. But I think that even jail being an option for this is just still such a slippery slope that, as Melody said just now, there's going to be even more, of course. So I think that's the general reason, just full stop, say no to this and not carry it forward. I don't want to have to come up here again in a year and kind of say the same things. I don't want to make my argument emotionally charged, but we don't apply mandatory reporting to many other crimes, and I think there's a good reason for that. So that's all I have to say. You guys have a good night.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Sorry, actually, one last thing. There is some information I would like to hand out. It's from the Liberal Gun Club, Why Root Causes Matter. I think it's a good report. You guys might get some insight out of it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come and testify? Please come down.
Jared Yocum, 6424 South 31st Street. And thank you, Councilman Christensen, for going back and rethinking some of the terminology and the.
Thank you very much.
Aspects of this ordinance. A couple other points that I'd like you to consider, if you haven't already, is what do you mean by hardened and securely? Is a plastic, Plano case, a hard plastic case hardened enough, or do you want aluminum, steel? Secure. What is secure? Is a cable attached to your car secure? Bolt cutters can easily hit that. Is it physically bolted to the frame of the car? That's almost impossible to do. So there's just kind of some options there you need to look at. Trunks. SUVs don't have trunks that keep anything hidden from view. Trucks don't have trunks that keep anything hidden from view. So that kind of really eliminates any SUV or any truck from being able to carry a long gun. Something to piggyback off of our previous speaker, high school trap. We have a major high school trap culture in Lincoln. All of the teams that come in from out of town, once they get done eating or shooting, they can't go anywhere in Lincoln to eat. They have to immediately go home because they can't leave the shotguns in their vehicles. So just something else to consider on this. Oh, glove compartments. I don't know of any single glove compartment in a car that can hold a pistol that is already locked in a case. They are all way too small. They're narrow. They don't have the size capacity needed to hold even a Plano case, a hardened TSA-approved case. So, and I for one will never put a firearm pistol in a glove compartment that is not cased. There's just way too much dangerous. The trigger is not blocked. It's, I will never do it. So if you cannot put a case in a glove compartment, that part of the ordinance should not even be in written in. And then another question I had was enforcement. How is this going to be enforced? Is it going to be strictly enforced? Are cops going to walk parking lots, looking in cars to see if they can see a case? Or they just going to happen to pull somebody over and then check it? If they are in a parking lot, say Walmart, and they happen to see a case in the back of it, or in the back of an SUV, are they going to sit there and wait for the owner to come out to check to see if that case is securely fastened to that vehicle? It's not a good use of their time. So there are just a couple of points to consider for your next rewrite. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Oh, yes.
Can I move that we delay?
Oh, absolutely. Please.
So I move that we delay until, with public hearing, until the 21st of October.
Second. Okay. Moved by Christensen, seconded by Ward. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next in is item 5E, amending Chapter 9.36 of the Lincoln Municipal Code entitled Weapons by adding a new section numbered 9.36.032, requiring the timely report to the Lincoln Police Department of firearms lost or stolen within the city limits.
Thank you very much. Chief Blimeister, I'd like you to go ahead and say a few words, and then I have a few words I'd like to say, since this is something that I've introduced. So please go ahead.
Jeff Blimeister, and I served the city as the chief of police, and just want to provide a little bit of background and perspective on this. So far this year through today, 65 firearms have been stolen, 12 stolen from a vehicle. Of the 65 stolen in 2019, 11 have been recovered. The timely reporting of firearms has the potential, the potential to prevent the use of the gun in a crime of violence. The serial number, so once a report is made, the serial number is entered into local and national databases where it can be queried by law enforcement. This remains active until the firearm is recovered. The response by members of the Lincoln Police Department allows us to search for fingerprints and DNA, both that can be fragile, and the potential for successful recovery of those items of evidentiary nature dissipate over time. The timely report allows our officers to search for other evidence that may have been left behind. This begins an investigative course where we conduct a canvas for potential witnesses while their recall is still vivid. We search for video from businesses, residents, and even individuals who might have had cellphones in the area before the retention periods of these video elapsed. The theft of firearm requires follow-up, so this is a codification within the Lincoln Police Department, that there is follow-up that is issued to both the investigating or the responding officer and to our Criminal Investigations Unit. The reality is that the theft of a firearm or a lost firearm is a concern to not only the community's safety, but that to our officers, and that's why you see this information being briefed on or in our internal lineups, on our social media platforms, and with traditional media outlets. We want to empower our staff, and we want to empower the citizens of Lincoln with the information in order to expedite the recovery and prevent it from being used in some type of crime. The foundation for this language exists today and has since 2010 in Nebraska Revised Statute 66, that's 2249. It directs those holding a concealed weapon permit that if a handgun or other firearm owned by such permit holder is lost or stolen, the permit holder should notify his or her county sheriff or local police department of that fact. Once again, this language is not mandatory, and I, that's on the testimony back there, but it does emphasize a best practice. We've all seen incidents of mass tragedy and suicide involving firearms that eventually did lead to the forming of the Child Access to Firearms Safe Storage Task Force. The concept of mandatory reporting was brought forward during those discussions and in the final report. The ordinance can't stand alone, but taken in context of education, awareness, enforcement, and partnerships, it can make an impact. And just as a point of education, we've done an analysis over the last five years of thefts from automobiles. October is the highest, the month with the highest number of thefts for auto every year in the last five years. And so if nothing else, this public discussion is important to remind people not only that have firearms in their vehicles, but leave anything in their vehicles, to take those items with them and prevent that theft from occurring. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for Chief Blimeister? Yes, Roy?
What other crimes are there, as touched upon by one of the other testifiers, that require the private citizen who's become a victim to report or be charged?
As far as I'm aware, the only crime like that is child abuse and neglect, where there is mandatory reporting that is tasked within the parameters of the statute.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Benny?
Thank you. Push the button.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, thanks for coming forward, and I appreciate the information you shared with us. I'm one of those residents that's had his vehicle, didn't lock it, someone walked by, flicked the handle, and I came out the next morning to find everything rummaged through. I did report that, and your officers came out. It was one of those questions, well, do we do DNA? Do we do fingerprinting? Do you have the resources to do that, the staff to do that? Or do you, if we did it for all of them, it would be time-consuming.
That's a great question, Councilman. And I can tell you that I testified that 65 firearms so far this year, 12 of those were stolen from motor vehicles. And within our policies or procedures, there are advanced strategies that are employed because of the potential for a firearm to be utilized in a crime of violence. And so in those where a firearm is stolen, I can assure you that those extended measures are being taken. I wish I could sit here today and tell you that it is being taken in every single theft from a motor vehicle, because it is not. It's in the thousands is what we're doing there. But once again, when it involves a firearm, we are taking those steps.
Thank you.
Yes, Richard?
You mentioned something about it already being in the state code. Is that correct? And if there's a, if you have a permit of some sort that you're required to report a firearm stolen?
It is. It exists within Nebraska Revised Statute 692249, which is all the statutes that govern the use and application for a carry concealed weapons permit. But it does not mandate. It stops short of it. In fact, the language is very specific. It talks about handgun or other firearm owned by such permit holder is lost or stolen, the permit holder should notify. It does not say shall. This particular ordinance would say shall.
Okay. But if you're not a permit holder, which you don't have to be for certain weapons, you wouldn't have to or shouldn't have to. you wouldn't have to or shouldn't have to, I guess?
That is correct. That's where the, this language already exists, but it does not make application to anything other than those that hold a carry concealed weapon permit.
Thank you very much.
You have another bite at the apple? I know I've had my own one.
Oh, you may ask.
Sorry. You, you said sixty-five and twelve this year. Sixty-five, are, what are the numbers like for previous years on people who said, called in? Do you have numbers on, I just got to my car, looks like somebody broke into it, oh my God, I had a gun in it, would you guys come out in a hurry?
Yes, um, if I could, if I put it on there correctly?
Upside down.
Upside down.
Upside down, yeah.
Okay, that is the trend line for
Oh, goodness.
the years from two thousand through two thousand eighteen. And as you can see from that particular, and these are only stolen guns from a motor vehicle, not the entirety of, um, throughout the city. So last year, twenty-two, so far this year, I testified that there was twelve. Um, and you can see a good change in the trend line, right? So from fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you were seeing an increase, a pretty good decrease in two thousand eighteen. We do attribute that to the nine P M. routine. We think that that is a component. We think that these advanced conversations are, um, are making an impact. And once again, I, I have no idea, because we don't track how many individuals in Lincoln or Lancaster County own firearms. But this is a very, very small percentage. What it does tell me as the chief of police is the vast, vast majority of firearm, um, owners are responsible individuals that are making very good choices and not leaving their firearms unsecured. And I can also attest that the majority of individuals are reporting their firearms when they are stolen. But there are still a few that do not, and we are tasked with prevention, right? We're tasked with preventing these mass casualty and suicides, and so in the broad context of those conversations that are occurring here in Lincoln and nationally, this has the potential, the propensity to make an impact. And I can leave, um, these handouts for all of you.
Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate that. Thank you for testifying, too. Um, I have a few comments, because this is an ordinance that I had proposed, and I can tell you that the, the communities that have experienced mass shootings all say the same thing. We never thought something like this could ever happen in our town. Poll after poll of Americans indicate they want their elected officials to take action to keep our families and communities safer.
Thank you.
From more funding for mental health services, to extreme risk protective orders, to universal background checks, to gun safety measures like the two that we have on our agenda today. So here are some of the facts. The U.S. has more homicides per million people than any other nation on earth. Australia has the lowest at one point four. The United States has the highest at twenty-nine point seven. The next closest country is Switzerland at seven point seven. And I want to come back to Australia in a bit. On average, there is more mass shootings than days of the year. In two thousand fifteen, out of three hundred and thirty-six days, there were three hundred and fifty-five mass shootings. States with more guns have more gun deaths. States with tighter gun control laws have fewer gun-related deaths. States with more guns have more police officers killed on duty. Nearly two-thirds of gun deaths are suicides. Americans make up about five percent of the earth's population, but own about forty-six percent of the entire global stock of civilian firearms. The U.S. does not have more individuals with mental health issues than other countries. We're about average. The U.S. is about one percent higher than Canada and France, but is actually one percent lower than Australia. So Australia up above had the lowest deaths per, uh, due to guns. Keep in mind the statistic from Austral- from above, that Australia has the lowest homicide rate, but is, actually has one percent more folks with mental health issues. In two thousand eighteen, legislatures across the country rejected about ninety percent of the state-level bills backed by the NRA. Gun control measures passed, overtaking pro-gun measures for the first time in at least six years. I know Chief Blimeister shared with you details about Lincoln itself. In two thousand seventeen, we had a total of a hundred and forty-three guns stolen. Out of that, in two thousand seventeen, forty of those firearms were stolen from vehicles. In two thousand eighteen, we had a total of a hundred and forty-eight guns stolen, and out of that, twenty-two firearms were stolen from vehicles. That is why we are taking on these very tough issues to make sure that we do everything we can to keep our families and communities safer. So now I would welcome anyone who would like to testify on the ordinance before us in favor of it.
Melody Vaquero, uh, from Nebraska against gun violence. I'm at forty-four oh one, South Fifty-fourth Street here in Lincoln. Um, we are pleased to support this ordinance. We really appreciate the language that, um, clarifies that it is the person who owns or is in possession of the firearm when it has been reported, uh, when it is lost or stolen. Uh, we think that's, you know, the person closest to the weapon being removed is really good. One of the things we talked about on the task force that the city did earlier this year was there was a case in Lincoln, Nebraska, where somebody was dangerous and they wanted to go after an ex-girlfriend. And so they asked their buddy, they said, hey, can I borrow your gun? And the guy said, no, man, you cannot borrow my gun, that's not cool. Uh, so the, the guy took the gun anyway, because it was just leaning up against the wall, and he drove out to Iowa and, uh, murdered some, uh, her and her family. And, but that guy did call the police, and because he did that, he, the police were able to engage and find that person, not before he murdered people, but, uh, he only had a few hours with that gun. So that's really good. Uh, and so we really think this is a first step. We definitely need to keep talking about storage, because had the person who owned the gun had it locked up, um, and not leaning up against the wall, maybe those people would still be alive. We had a story here in Omaha. So this is a story from Omaha last week, and I just want to bring these stories up, because when we're talking about this, we can talk about statistics and, uh, facts and figures, but this is a real teenager who won't graduate this year from Burke High School. Uh, he's seventeen, there were two fourteen-year-olds in the car, a boy and a girl, and, uh, none of them are old enough to buy guns, none of them are, uh, old enough to have them, but they did. And there isn't an adult who's going to be held responsible for this. And in fact, the fourteen-year-old, um, who accidentally discharged the weapon is in custody right now. And so, you know, the aunt is quoted in the article saying, they don't know where the gun came from. Who reported it stolen? I don't know. Was it reported stolen? I don't know. Uh, but that's not the law in Omaha, it's not the law in Lincoln, and I hope that changes. I hope we, uh, change the law to do gun storage, because children cannot have guns. They cannot have guns. It is dangerous, it puts everyone in danger, it put Gary in danger, and he will not graduate high school this year. Um, I have a couple more postcards that I just saved, uh, that I wanted to read on the record. I have this one from Caitlin. She was six. She picked this postcard out, we had four different messages, and this is the one that she wanted, uh, sent to her city council. Guns make bullying fatal. And then she signed it on the other side for you. Um, with Matthew, he said, as a student, I feel in danger just trying to get an education. Elliot said, I don't like being scared at school. Uh, Becky says, please do what you can to protect our children. Emily said, I'm signing this for my little sister's safety. Um, you know, these just go on and on. Um, and so I just wanted to remind people as we talk about data and, you know, anytime a gun is not stolen, that is not acceptable. It's not acceptable. So we need to hold those people accountable, and it's amazing that most people report guns, and it is wonderful that they will not be in the face of law enforcement, um, as having done something wrong. But when they don't report their gun stolen, they put people in danger, and they deserve to account for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down and testifying. Is there anyone else that would like to testify in favor of this? Is there anyone that would like to testify in opposition? Please come down.
Andy Gick, Point nine eighteen, South Thirteenth. We are making victims criminals. If, I don't see a timeframe on this. So if a weapon is stolen that I happen to own, and I don't realize it in a timely manner, which is a very nebulous number, who's timely? Is it same day, next day, within minutes of discovering it's, I don't know. And, and a number like that is almost indefensible. But you have made now the person who maybe tries to do something right, a criminal. I don't see a level of crime. Is it a misdemeanor? Is it a felony? Is it the death penalty? Are they going to be charged with accessory after, before and after the fact? If you listen to some of the people in the, uh, anti-gun lobby, the answer would be yes, you're an accessory before and after the fact and deserve the death penalty. We need to determine very precisely what we are doing to make victims criminals. Again, we also need to look back at the Constitution of the United States, and I will continue to beat upon that, because I don't know about you, but I took an oath in office that has never expired, that I will defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I saw a lot up there, someone else remembers that oath like I do. You never walk away from that oath. And with the Constitution, in the Bill of Rights, the Second Amendment, which defends all amendments, shall not be infringed. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, uh, my name is Amy Wymer, A.M.Y.W.I.M.E.R., and I do have my testimony that I'm going to hand to you guys. Because it actually does have some statistics, which apparently I, were poo-pooed just a couple of minutes ago. Statistics actually do matter, because that brings the facts forward to what we're talking I do thank you for your time and your attention. I am here to speak against the ordinance, and I would like my testimony to be entered into the public record. And I'm going to butcher this person's name, so I apologize ahead of time. According to C.O.K. Yunes, "Why do victims not report the influence of police and the criminal justice cynicism on the dark figure of crime?" American citizens report crimes on average about only fifty percent of the time, and only thirty-nine point one percent of the time on property crime, which is gun theft as well. However, gun owners report at least seventy-seven percent of the time, according to, uh, the study that I cited, and according to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, that number it may be even higher. They could be reporting in the high eighty percents. So what is that difference between the two? It's likely people that aren't supposed to have a gun, that have acquired it from a friend. They're not going to report their gun stolen, because it would be incriminating themselves. Uh, we're, we're really talking about fourteen percent, twenty percent era, area. Gun owners are more likely to report stolen weapons than they do violent crimes. That is how important it is to lawful gun owners to report their stolen thing, because they know the importance placed on that item. This ordinance is an unneeded feel-good message, a measure that blames the victim and could ultimately violate the Supreme Court decision, Haynes versus United States, in many cases, especially given the tone of this is just the first step, that many people have mentioned in, uh, both social media and in local news articles. Once we pass more and more ordinances on gun owners, the more likely we will run into a Haynes versus the U.S. type of situation. Instead of prosecuting and finding victims of crimes, remember, these are victims, they are being treated as criminals already. We should be focusing on things that have actually helped law-abiding citizens, like the LPD's nine P M. routine. I'm in favor of, uh, things that don't require laws on people to make them moral, because there's less interaction with the police, less likely that you'll be hurt because of your interaction with the police, let's say you're drunk, or tired, or just belligerent, and you're a jerk. The less interaction we can have with our city police, the safer they will be, and the safer our citizens will be. This nine P M. routine is a brilliant idea, and it has reduced thefts out of, uh, out of vehicles, according to the LPD. Nationwide crime has been on a steady decline since nineteen ninety-eight, and this is reflected in Lincoln as well. It is natural for us to feel crime is on the increase, because when it's not a part of our norm, like it was in the eighties, it actually stands out more to us and becomes more prevalent in our lives, and we feel we have to react to it. We should be celebrating our increase in safety, our police department and our citizens, for following a better path. It is also natural to want to do something when we see something wrong, because it is human nature to identify threats over anything else. But the problem with the shouldn't we do something attitude is that it does lead to unintended consequences. One of those unintended consequences is that fewer stolen guns will be reported to the police because of the fear that the timeframe has passed of that forty-eight hours. I also contend that people will be less likely to report it because they are also hiding another crime, say marijuana
One minute.
in the car, things like that. I do thank you all for your time, and, uh, I am vehemently against this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Welcome, please.
Thank you. My name's Corey Raymond. Uh, my business address is six fifty J Street here in Lincoln. Um, I've been a defense attorney twenty years, and, uh, in reviewing these ordinances and talking to a couple of my defense attorney friends, we had, uh, one of the big issues that we had regarded subsection three of the theft. And I, and I'd ask you to consider this ordinance with the other ordinance, uh, that Mr. Christensen has proposed, because I think they work, they either work against or they work against each other or for each other. And my argument is they actually work against each other when you consider subsection three of the reporting requirement. Now, I look at these ordinances from a perspective of if a client calls, how am I going to advise him? So I was thinking of this individual who left his firearm in his, in his car, he locked his car, somebody broke in anyway and they got it. So he's in violation, because he didn't have it locked up if this new ordinance passes. So he comes to me and says, well, I got this gun stolen, and I broke the law, because it wasn't in my safe stor- locked in a case, right? Well, this ordinance requires him to report that. He has to tell, he has to tell law enforcement, um, the caliber, make, model, distinguishing marks, but then he has to confess under subsection three. He has to confess the circumstances, including the date, place, and the manner that that was taken. So the law has forced him, it has compelled him to be a witness against himself. And if he refuses to be a witness against himself and comply with subsection three, he's violated that ordinance. So they can charge him with failure to report, because this is shall, as Chief Blimeister noted, this is shall. So the, so the individual is left in a position of, if I'm in full compliance with the reporting statute, I have to confess that my firearm wasn't secured in my vehicle correctly. So you've left in a posi- in a position to, which, which law am I going to break here? And so I was trying to think, how, how am I going to advise this individual that's come to me with it, with this dilemma? Well, the odds are, eh, eh, the odds are they're prob- you know, if they do find it, how are they going to prove that you didn't have it stored? How, how are they going to prove that you know it was stolen? The odds are they're not going to find it anyway. I mean, there's an incentive not to report this. And by the way, if you do report it, and your firearm is important to you, and your concealed carry permit is important to you, and you think, oh, it's just a couple hundred dollar fine, well, you also just lost your concealed carry permit, because you committed a firearm offense, and that's probably more important to most firearm owners I know than the two hundred And that's probably more important to most firearm owners I know than the $200 fine. So, I would ask you to consider, you know, there's very few laws, as was discussed, that requires someone to do something, much less the victim of a crime, to do something. And requiring them to report this, I certainly understand where you're coming from. And I read those same reports, and how firearms are stolen, and I appreciate LPD's efforts with the nine, nine o'clock lockup routine. But I would ask you to consider, what is the purpose of subsection three? Is it to get convictions under the other ordinance? Because if that's your, if that's your goal, you're ma, you're compelling people to, to be a witness against yourself. And that, I don't care about the Second Amendment for this, this is about the Fifth Amendment. This is about the, the Nebraska Constitution, where you can't do that. And you can't say, "Well, too bad for him, he should have thought better." No, that's what this country's about. We protect the rights of that person. And this is, and the, the person that has the money, that calls me, that I get to tell him, don't report it. You're going to lose your CCP if you're, I don't know if I would tell him that. I would advise him, here's your options. And I suspect he would go that route. But what about the person that doesn't have the money to call me? What about the person that, that is trying to do the right thing, and he just walked himself into a citation? So, I would ask you to consider, is, is subsection three necessary? And it's not that, if the police can ask about it, but the problem is you require it under law, and that's compelling someone to be a witness against somebody. And I know the LPD, they're really good at getting confessions out of people. And that's okay under this, because maybe somebody will confess to it. That's their own fault. All my clients do it all the time. But once the law requires somebody to answer that question, I think you've run afoul. And I'd ask you to reconsider subsection three, and make that reporting statute as, as narrow as you can, because you're requiring someone to do something. And that's not, that's not common under the law. So, leave it to the, what you need is the gun, probably the, the date and time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Raymond. Next testifier.
Hi, my name's Dave Kendall. I'm 2532 Southwest 16th here in Lincoln. Don't have a prepared statement, had to rush down here to make it. Just wanted to say, I think it's incredibly bad policy to make a criminal out of a, out of a victim. We do this, like we heard earlier, in only one other circumstance, and I assume that's if you know that there was a, there was child neglect or abuse going on, then you're required to, to report it. I know nobody on this council would be in favor of making a victim out of, say, a victim of sexual assault, if they don't report the sexual assault, which allows their, their predator to go free. If they don't report that, are we going to make them a criminal? Because they're endangering other people by not reporting it. Is that objectionable? It is to me. I think it's just incredibly bad government policy to start making criminals out of the victims of crimes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down.
Hello, Councilman, Councilwoman Raybold, excuse me. I did think of some more words. I'm Trevor Riley, T.R.E.V.O.R.R.E.I.L.O.Y. So, Chief Blimeister, I actually think had the best point, which is, it's important for us to have this public discussion. I think we should just leave it as the public discussion. I just want to reiterate the point that I think this, this ordinance should not be put in place. Neither of them should even be considered for approval. I really think just dropping it would be the best idea. Specifically, Councilwoman Raybold, that 355 mass shootings number, I believe, is from the Gun Violence Archive, or Mother Jones, one of the two. But I believe the, the definition of four or more people injured or killed is a lot more broad than the definition of four or more people killed, which is the Congressional Research Office definition. And actually, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't have to worry about it. But how people would get around the reporting requirement is that they just wouldn't report it. And then, if the gun is, is even used in a crime, you know, what somebody's going to say is, "Oh, I sold that in a private transaction a long time ago, and then never saw the guy again." So, who knows? And the trail stops there. It's, if I was doing the wrong thing, that's probably exactly what I would do. I'm not honestly going to be breaking the law, but I think honestly, if this ordinance goes through, I will civilly disobey it occasionally. Occasionally, I forget that I have my gun on me. When I go out someplace, I'm like, "Oh, shoot, there's a bar. Clearly, I came from somewhere else. I'm going to put this in my center console, not the glove box." But I'm still going to lock my car, and I'm still going to go in for an hour knowing full well, "Well, I didn't telegraph to somebody by putting my gun into a case that my gun is in a car, because, oh, hey, he went into this restaurant for an hour, and clearly, he put his gun into his trunk, and he secured it with this cable, because it's going to require you to get out and move around and secure your gun." I just think that both this mandatory requiring and, the mandatory reporting and required storage is just bad ideas. I just do not think we should go forward with it. I do respect you guys and appreciate how you're doing this under good motives. I just don't think the results will be effective. That's all I have.
Thank you very much for coming down. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this matter? Chief Blimeister, would you like a rebuttal on any of the comments?
I can try to answer any additional questions that individuals may have. I think many of the questions have been posed and answered, so if you have anything else. I, I do want to, to Mr. Raymond's point regarding the Fifth Amendment, or the potential for a Fifth Amendment violation based upon subsection three, I can tell you that that has been discussions that we have had internally, and we have reached out for legal opinion regarding that, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, you have not received an answer on that legal opinion?
I'm going to leave that up to law, so.
And I think Jeff Kirkpatrick is coming up. And then, Jeff, I would like you to perhaps walk through the process of this ordinance. Say, if someone gets a citation, how is it handled? And then, of course, if you could address Chief Blimeister's questions, if possible.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. Let me start with the question that Mr. Raymond raised. If, if someone went to Mr. Raymond and said, "My gun was stolen, and am I obliged to report this?" He would have to say, under the city ordinance, if this passes, you are required to report it. As to the question of the circumstances of the theft, the date, place, and manner, now, Mr. Raymond was talking about if stolen from a, a motor vehicle, and it's not secured. That's not the law in Lincoln right now. Maybe the law, that depends on what you decide to do next month. It's not the law now. But if you pass a safe storage ordinance, and someone is required to report the theft, you know, date, place, manner, the date, well, that's the time. And I think Chief Blimeister explained why the date and the place are very important to LPD, if they're going to actually do an investigation. If we didn't require that, and you said, "My gun was stolen," well, where? I'm not going to tell you that. Well, when? I'm not going to tell you that. Hard to have a very effective investigation. And it really doesn't make as much sense to pass this. Now, if safe storage is passed, and it's on the books in, in Lincoln, and again, someone has gone to a very competent attorney, like Mr. Raymond, and said, "We've got safe storage law in Lincoln. I didn't store it safely, and now it's been stolen, but I also know I'm required to report that to LPD." Mr. Raymond would say, "It's a good thing you went to a competent attorney. You need to report this, and here's what you can say. Tell them the date, tell them the place, tell them somebody broke the window out of my vehicle. And when they say, 'Was it securely stored,' you say, 'Officer friendly, I'm going to have to take the Fifth Amendment there.'" That's why the Fifth Amendment is in the U.S. Constitution. That's why it's so important, a concept in criminal law. And that's really the discussion we've been having for the last few weeks, talking about the intersection of these two potential ordinances, and do they work against each other? And an argument can be made where you're, you're expecting a fairly sophisticated understanding of the, of the legal system and the law in the state, in the city. And yeah, you might make that argument. But as Chief Blimeister could tell you, a lot of the people in this city that break the law don't have a very sophisticated understanding of their rights, and they make confessions all the time. And should we pass every law, really worried about people making a confession? I don't know. That's why we pass the law. How many citations are we probably going to issue under this ordinance? If you decide to pass it, probably very few. So, then the question for the council is, why should we pass it if we're not going to have very many citations? I think the answer is, pretty much everyone that comes up here on both sides of the issue, and they talk about gun owners, will say to you over and over again, gun owners, by and large, are very law-abiding people. And if you pass this ordinance, and you say, "You should report your gun if it's lost or stolen," they're going to follow the law, and they're going to report it. And that's the policy reason for passing this ordinance, if you choose to do so.
And so, if we work with that premise, that most responsible gun owners are clearly law-abiding, if they understand that if a firearm is stolen from their vehicle, or stolen, they are required to report it, as most responsible gun owners are law-abiding, they would follow that law. If Councilman Christensen's ordinance is passed and put forward, once everyone understands the law, that you must secure a firearm in your vehicle while you are not in that vehicle, most responsible gun owners, once they know the law, are always law-abiding. And I, I believe that Ms. Wymer gave some statistics. I don't know where they came from, but she said, "Gun owners report 77% of their stolen weapons," which is, which is commendable. And we want to continue to encourage, but we want to make sure that everybody knows that this is, a responsible gun owner will follow the laws of the city of Lincoln. So, if someone gets a citation for either, either one of the ordinance, how is that citation processed or handled? Is it, I know Andy had raised a question, is it a misdemeanor, whatever?
Right. And, and so, this is a misdemeanor under the city code. There is not, if you look at this ordinance alone, you say, "Well, what's the possible penalties?" That's not in this part of the ordinance. It doesn't specify. We have a lot of, of our city code that does not specify what the penalty is. So, you fall back to the, to the penalty that covers all city misdemeanors unless otherwise specified. So, the maximum penalty is up to $500 fine, or up to six months in jail. That's the maximum penalty for any violation of the city code.
So, if someone gets a citation, would they necessarily need the services of a very competent attorney like Mr. Raymond? Or can they just go before the judge and tell them their circumstance of how it happened? You know, they, "I wanted to report the," you know, most people care about public safety and making sure that law enforcement is aware that a weapon had been stolen. What does?
Well, most people that, that violate the city code and, and go to county court don't have an attorney. But I think Mr. Raymond did raise an important point. If this is determined to be a violation that relates to the ownership of firearm, and I'm not expressing an opinion on that, but that has some repercussions for a lot of people, so they may in fact want to hire an attorney in that circumstance. When you look at what the likely penalty is going to be, I mean, I can't predict what a judge is going to do in any specific case, but context does matter when you go before the court. And so, if you missed it by one day, are we going to give a citation? Are we going to file on that? There's going to be some discretion in, in how this is applied, but there's also going to be discretion as far as a judge. Is this going to be maximum, we're going to lock you up for six months for not reporting? I would like to say that most judges, I think most judges would not imply the maximum penalty in those cases. However, I would also say, if you are out driving around, and you've got a loaded handgun that's sitting there in your car, and you park on the street, somebody sees it, they break out the window, they take the gun, you don't report it, a week later, that firearm is used in a shooting, somebody's killed, and you haven't reported it, so the police are not aware and looking for it, it's possible that a judge might say, "Your, your negligence is related to that death, and I'm going to hold you accountable for that." We see that in other criminal activities. There are a lot of people that have been convicted of DWI, and, and you get a, usually it's a fine. If you're driving while you're intoxicated, and it leads to the death of someone, the court treats that much more seriously, even though you're equally negligent whether or not you kill somebody or not. That's really luck of the draw, whether you happen to, to run into somebody or not. There's a lot of folks that have been intoxicated, they've driven, they've been very fortunate that they haven't caused someone's death or injury. And so, when you look at what can happen, and what's likely to happen, what's likely to happen is it's not the biggest crime out there. What could happen, though, is if it contributes to someone being shot or, or killed, that you've got to assume that the court's going to look at that a little bit more seriously.
So, most responsible, law-abiding gun owners would report it because they don't want to be the, a suspect in a crime, should that weapon have been used in a crime?
Right. That's really the policy rationale behind that.
Benny?
I guess, go with Mr. Christensen first.
Okay.
I guess the point, though, would be whether they reported it or not, if it was stored inappropriately, they could still be charged.
If it was stored inappropriately?
Stored inappropriately.
And they reported it?
And they still report it, they could still be charged if somebody was killed with that weapon.
Well, under what law?
Under the fact that they would have had to store that gun appropriately in the vehicle, and failed to do so.
If there was a law, and it's not in Lincoln, I think as a, a personal injury attorney, under a theory of negligence, would have a stronger argument. I don't know that I've ever seen that be successful in court. May have been in some locations around the country. The fact it would be illegal would be more indication of negligence in that case. Okay.
Benny, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both, gentlemen, for coming forward. This has been enlightening, illuminating, and stressful, all in one stroke. My question's a little weirder than that. We are, if, if this passes, there's a 48-hour clock. When does that clock start?
That's a great question, and one that was raised by Andy. So, it does contain a 48-hour clock, and it does contain the very specific provision that after the theft or loss is first discovered. So, first discovered. So, that burden would be upon law enforcement. And once again, although much of the opposition to this particular ordinance surrounds the punitive phase to someone who is a victim of a crime, and I'm not going to dispute that, the real context of this is prevention. Letting law enforcement utilize the tools and resources that we have available to recover this particular firearm. And that, that has to remain the focus. And if I could take a moment, just to extend, just sitting here and listening to the discussion, for those who are in advocacy, and those who are in opposition, and having the chance to sit in on the task force, I am just so proud of our community that we can have these incredibly difficult conversations in such a civil way, so.
So, I don't think I got an answer.
Yeah, well, I, I think he referred to it, but it says, "When it's first discovered." And so, the concern would be, and, and again, most gun thefts are out of homes. People break in, they steal everything that's valuable. Firearms are valuable and portable, and so they're often stolen. What if I'm on vacation, somebody breaks in, they steal my gun safe, and they steal all the guns that are in there? Well, I can't report that within 48 hours of the theft, because I didn't know about it. When I get home, I see my house has been ransacked. That's when I've got 48 hours to report it after I discover it's been lost. If I have a gun put away, and it's up in my closet, and I don't, I don't look at it very often, inherited from my grandfather, and, but I'm looking for it at one point, or I'm looking for something else, and the box is right there, and it's gone, didn't realize it was stolen, the 48 hours starts when I discover it was stolen. Maybe it was stolen a year earlier, but the clock starts when I know about it as the gun owner.
Thank you. That was going to be the question I was going to ask you. I wanted to figure out what the scenario was, if I'm on vacation, and I think you just addressed it. Thank you.
Richard, yeah?
Yeah, one other quick question. You said on subsection three that you could take the fifth. Can you take a fifth on any of those three points on subsection three?
Well, you could only take the fifth if it incriminates, potentially could incriminate you in a criminal.
If you know that it's been over 48 hours, you could plead the fifth on the date of the theft?
Yes. And I would, I suspect the LPD would, what they would tell you is, even if it's a week later, they would still prefer to know, and they'd prefer to have the details, because that gives them information that they can use in an investigation.
But you would also be incriminating yourself, that you're saying that it's been a week.
But, but I would tell you, from the, from the standpoint of the police department, from the standpoint of the city law department, we are not saying that this makes sense from the idea that we want to lock more people up, or go, have them go to court so they're fined. This makes sense from the policy perspective of getting more people to report. And if you get more people to report, if nobody has ever cited, or if they're paying a $10 fine, but it gets more people to report, it's accomplished the goal. If that makes sense.
Chief Blimeister, if, if someone discovers their hunting rifle is missing when it comes to hunting season, and they haven't looked at the, at the rifle in, you know, quite a bit of time, if they come and report that to you, and they can tell you maybe the make, model, and serial number, is that something that law enforcement enters into a database so that perhaps, once it's reported, that it would help facilitate either... that perhaps, once it's reported, that it would help facilitate either tracking it down, or maybe, I guess, if a crime has been committed with that weapon, that they would be able to take measures or assist in the solving of a crime, if it were used in a crime?
Even if we can't establish a clear timeframe, the serial number is a powerful component of finding that particular firearm in a variety of different ways. That entry of that serial number into the national and local databases remains there until it's recovered. And that is how we recover lots of different firearms that have been stolen.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I do have one more. Chief, I want to applaud you and your staff. You do great work in our community. As I tell people often, you consider your office to be community servants first in law enforcement. It's just another component of the jobs. You've also talked about discretion, how you've given your office some discretion to make decisions on citations. Would this, would that also apply to the circumstance?
It would. And so discretion is a very ambiguous type of incident, but our officers know that they want the information in order to most appropriately make everyone aware, make their peers aware, because that particular firearm could be floating around in a vehicle. And they could employ discretion. Every single fact and circumstance is going to be a little bit different, but to Mr. Kirkpatrick's point and to the data, even though that presented by Amy, this is a very, very small number. And the number of citations, I hope that there's never a citation that comes out of this particular ordinance if it's passed. But even if there are, it's going to be in circumstances most appropriately described by Mr. Kirkpatrick, is when there is a serious violent offense that has occurred with that particular firearm. And when we backtrack it, we find out that that firearm has been stolen and not reported. So.
And just a little context as far as how often this may be used. And I don't know. I mean, I don't know that any of us know. But we do have a ordinance on our books right now that would come off of the books if you adopt Councilman Christensen's ordinance, which requires you not to store firearms in your vehicle for more than 24 hours unattended at a time. We've had that on our books for a number of years. We have, when we look at our criminal violations, we have codes so we can track what people are charged with in our C G system. We don't have a code for that ordinance violation, because as far as we know, it's never been filed. At least we couldn't find any indication that it had. And certainly if we'd filed it several times, we would have created a code for that. This might be something where we don't get around to creating a code because we never use it. That would be our goal, that people would follow the law, they would help us to solve crimes, and they would not be cited because they're helping us to solve crimes.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you both very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We shall go on to the next item.
That actually concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Ordinance is third reading, item 6A, text amendment 19004, application of City Ventures to amend section 27.67.040 subsection AI of the Lincolnous Book Code to add parking provisions for automatic car wash facilities, requiring one space per three employees on the largest shift with no parking required for self-service car washes. Introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Introduced by Bowers, seconded by McGinnis?
Yes, by McGinnis.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 6B is an ordinance establishing a pilot program to temporarily govern the use of shared mobility devices in the public right-of-way. Introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Bowers, seconded by McGinnis. And is there an amendment?
I have a motion to amend number two, which incorporated motion to amend number one.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to amend Bill 1951 to adopt a substitute ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Introduced by Ward, seconded by McGinnis. Do you want to tell us a little bit about?
So what this amendment does is replace the current ordinance and basically changes the minimum age of an operator of the scooter, the mobile device, as outlined in this ordinance, to raise the age from age 16 to age 18. And this was done, as I heard from a lot of my downtown constituents and people across Lincoln, as we all did, one way to address some of the safety issues that were concerned, that were expressed to us. And also, a number of us met with one of the vendors, should we pass this ordinance that we met with last week, spin, they require a minimum age of 18 as part of their policy. So this just helps us get in compliance now, should we adopt this ordinance. So that is the reason behind this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, are there any other comments? Yes, Benny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the councilwoman's amendment, and I think that is reasonable. I've got a couple hypotheticals I'd like to talk about, and I have a question for Legal, if we have time for that.
Should we vote on the motion to amend first?
I think we should, yes.
Okay. Well, yes, we can vote on the motion to amend.
And then we'll have the discussion about the things I want to talk about.
Yes, any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, let's vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, discussion on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We all heard about the story of the young person, the eight-year-old in Omaha. This change in age wouldn't affect that, right? We still can't govern parenting, or who has access to. As an older-than-18-year-old, I could rent a scooter in my name and then still hand it to someone under 18.
I see Legal coming forward to clarify.
So, yes, under the law, I think what Omaha has been looking at doing is, you know, your driver's license has that barcode on the back, and maybe that that can be read. I'm not exactly sure what that technology is, but I think that's what they're looking at.
Okay.
But so I think your scenario was saying that someone with a legitimate driver's license showing their age to be 18 or older could just scan it and then give it to their child and say, go have fun.
And we can't really legislate that in any manner to make that stop happening. I still think the 18-year-old's a good plan. I just wanted to throw that out there. We can only legislate, the company that's doing this, we can't legislate behavior of all the citizens.
Right, but I think if something happened to that child, that there could certainly be endangering that minor, you know, by renting that scooter for them while it was unlawful for them to ride it, would be endangering that minor.
Okay, thank you. I had one other question, I'm sorry to do this.
Go right ahead.
I spoke with a resident of our community, and they were concerned about the definition of, oh, what's the fancy words now, something?
Mobile?
Motorized. Motorized vehicle?
Yeah, they were concerned about the mobility and people who use motorized vehicles for transport, people who use wheelchairs and other devices. How do we distinguish between the two? I didn't see any real language exempting the other ones. Is it this shared mobility that makes the difference?
So there's the definition of electric scooter, which would be the permanent ordinance, and I think that that would be different than a, that's, than a, you know, a motorized wheelchair, which has another definition within our code. Got me having it in front of me, I know that those are specifically defined.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
The shared mobility devices require that interface with the company where you're essentially renting it from them. And so someone who owns their own
Electric scooter.
Electric scooter, that's not a shared mobility device, that's their mobility device.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
That answered my question.
That answered your question?
I'm sorry, Richard, I didn't mean to.
You know, I had an opportunity to talk with David Carey and Planning Department, because my concern with this is not that we, I mean, there's, there are a lot of questions, there have been just dozens of letters. I would like to know, if we move forward and have a pilot program, that we have the ability to have a robust research or documentation so that we can study this and know in six months or a year, this has been the impact. And Mr. Carey made me comfortable, and let me know that we could do this without having to pass it as part of law, but we could do this as part of policy, or just by pro forma.
And I'll just mention that one of the requirements for what's in the RFQ will be that these companies will commit, that they will provide the information that we ask for. And it's very data-driven, so there's a lot of information.
I'd like to be able to look back at data and make a decision in a year.
Any other discussion? Roy?
I'd like to make a couple points. First of all, I'm unaware of any community in the nation where they have done this, where it's a net positive for that community. The problems center around two things. One, people will drive these on the sidewalks, even though they're prohibited from being on the sidewalks, causing a hazard to pedestrians. And two, there is a serious problem with the intersection of motorized scooters and alcohol. And I just don't see how that turns out to not be a problem in our city. Three, we don't have the police resources to enforce and police this kind of activity. And another one is UNL bans these devices from their campus, and they're right downtown. I don't see how that interaction plays out positively. I just can't support this at this time.
James?
I will say that I do have some concerns and some worries, but I do think that setting out the structure is the responsible thing to do. It allows us to have a little bit more control. It allows us to put the public safety first by putting in some guidelines and being able to pull out if we determine that this is a threat to our public safety. So I'm a fan of this because I think it's better than doing nothing at all, and allows us to truly look after our community.
Benny, did you have additional comments?
I do. I'm going to push my button first. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some serious concerns about this. We've saw testimony about injury, we've seen testimony about where they're stored and how they're left in streets and sidewalks. I have some concerns about mobility issues for people who use, who are visually impaired and have other issues. I spent the weekend in Omaha and looked at some of how they're using and how it's been deployed there. I think as Councilman Bowers said, we need to do some really tightening up of ours, and if it takes some hints from Omaha. But the bottom line is, we can really, in my opinion, in my opinion, bottom line, we can really restrict this. But most of the people I've talked to are my age and older who are opposed to it, and the people who are in support of it are younger than me. So we're talking about the next generation. We have a responsibility to try to do something safe for them, but we also need to see where the limits are. I think this is a pilot, this is a year, and as Mr. Bowers said, we can stop this if it gets out of hand. This is also an opportunity for Lincolnites to show us their better nature. Can we do this, Lincolnite? This is on you. You can perform well and be empathetic to the people on pedestrians, you can be empathetic to people in cars. Drivers, you can do the same thing. And if it doesn't go that way, we can put an end to this. So this is an opportunity for all of you to show us that you're better nature.
Anyone else? I would concur with your comments. You know, this, on the surface, sounds like a very bad idea, a really bad idea for our community and the safety of people in our community. However, absent us putting and implementing this pilot program with parameters and guidelines that we establish, that means it's just wide open to any one of those companies coming into our municipality. I think this clearly is the right step with the pilot program. We can terminate at any point in the pilot project. We can terminate any one of, it's my understanding, the three vendors that would be accepted. That's some reassurance. However, I know that so many issues were raised about head injuries, head traumas, and I know I had follow-up discussions with some of the potential operators, asking them, what are you going to be doing? How are you going to be informing the public? How critically important it is that you wear a helmet, whether you want to or not? It's not mandated, but how do you get that message across? And they said that they would work with us in establishing any language that we feel appropriate or deem appropriate, that they put on either the stands or the policies that they have to sign, or the registration that they consent to, that it is an absolute must that you should wear a helmet. Because we know that 48% of the injuries that occurred in the study done in Austin were head injuries. Of the 192 injuries, 48% of them were head injuries. And a follow-up with Peggy, who testified from the Brain Alliance, a Brain Injury Alliance, saying, what do you hope to achieve? If you're not requiring people to wear helmets, you're going to get the same data that shows you the same number of injuries. So I would like to see us moving forward, working with the Planning Department as we tighten up the language about, you know, tracking the data on those injuries. We hope there are few, but also, you know, following up on encouraging people to wear helmets so that we don't have a repeat of the Austin statistics where 48% of the people have head injuries that can be for the rest of their lives. So as much as we, I think the consensus is, we have deep concerns about this being the right thing for our community, but if we don't put in the parameters of a pilot program and the guidelines and restrictions that make sense for our community, we'll never know, and we'll allow these other operators to come in. Roy, did you have one last thought?
Yes. We have a meeting scheduled with the Omaha City City Council, and they have a great deal of experience with this. They're in the pilot program, they've even discussed canceling their pilot program. I'm going to move that we delay the vote on this until after we meet with that city council and see what their concerns are. So I move this to be delayed until the 28th of October.
28th, we're just a little over a month, right?
Yep.
I'd like to ask Legal to come up. Did you get a second?
We've got a second before anything else can happen.
For the sake of argument, I will second your motion.
Okay, second it.
Now we can talk about it.
Yes. Can you please tell us, if we delay a month, will that allow any of the vendors to sneak in and establish services without working with us on our guidelines and restrictions and parameters?
So the way that the Law Department has read the current state, the status quo, is that there's nothing specifically that prohibits these devices from being kind of deposited on our streets. Omaha did not implement an ordinance because their view is that they would be considered litter and that they could pick them up. So I can't tell you right now what the city would do if they were just deposited, but that has happened in other places. And my understanding is there has been a conversation between Mr. Carey and these companies for the last several months, and they haven't come, and it's been an agreement that they won't come because they know that we're working on this.
Madam Chair, recognize Councilman Christensen, and Councilwoman Ward, and me.
Well, there's a simple solution to that. We can, in addition to moving it delayed until after we talk to the Omaha City Council about their experience, we can also make a separate motion to ban them until such time as we bring this up again in front of the council.
I'm trying to think.
Councilwoman Ward had her hand up.
Yes. I just would want to say I don't support a delay. I think we've had a number of briefings, with all due respect to Councilman Christensen, with planning, with mayor's staff, with one another, with one of the vendors, and I think, again, out of respect, it's just time to move forward with a vote and see where we are. And 30 days is a long time. And I'll just have to say, I've seen what Omaha has done, I've been up there a lot too. I don't think anything would change my mind by waiting a month. I think Lincoln can do it better. I think we owe it to our city to try. I share all those concerns that we've all talked about. I certainly have heard from my district and downtown, and we have a lot of work to do to tighten it up, and I think we can do that with a pilot project. So I just would want to say I would not support the delay today.
Okay. Well, David, I have a question. So, I mean, we are meeting with the Omaha City Council on Tuesday, October 15th, and should we get additional feedback? I think you're going to be crafting more details with these potential bidders, is that correct?
So the next stage would be, it's actually, LTU will be administering the RFQ, and so they've started just a draft to get started on what that RFQ will look like, working with purchasing, and that will be put out. And the, once they're responded to, a committee will look at those, just like any other purchasing contract. Once the bidders are selected, then there will be negotiations for individual contracts with each of those bidders. So I think realistically, we're probably looking at end of the year, beginning of next year, by the time that we have the bidders selected and these devices are out on the streets.
So it's, it's not necessary for us to have a delay because we would give you the information.
I would just add, um, I would try to just add to the information for you to consider today. Um, I think it's a great idea that you actually have that discussion with the city council up in Omaha. I think they're gonna give you a lot of feedback and I think that'd be informative. We have been talking with Omaha along the way as well, both, um, kind of at different departments, at different levels, trying to get a good feel for what's been happening up there. So we feel like we do understand what's happening up there. At the same time, I, I just wanna remind everybody that, that you, the act, your action today, if you were to approve this, would implement effectively the ban part of this. So that you are establishing that today with this as proposed. Um, so I think you could feel comfort in that you're not leaving the door open. That's one thing I would, I would state. The other is that, um, as Abby just said, we have quite a few steps and, and months to go here before we actually have something in place. So we are, we will be inviting pretty much any and all type of feedback and input as we move forward. Um, that, and again, the beauty of the, of the pilot is that we have that, we've identified that the outline of the sandbox in which we will be playing in, and so we can control it now. So I would just personally recommend at this point that, to adopt what's before you so that we can have that ongoing discussion.
I'm dying over here, thank you.
Okay.
That was kinda my question. If, you've had conversations with vendors. If we vote yes, they cannot come in before January first. If we vote, let me get that backwards. If we vote yes and pass this, the conversation you've had and this pilot program would not allow anybody putting anything on the street before January first without penalty.
It wouldn't necessarily be a January first limitation, but it would be a limitation on they would have to be part of a pilot program to come in.
Right. They need to be permitted.
Right.
So I'm, I understand that this ordinance would actually do what we want in both instances. It would in fact ban these electric scooters until such a time as they were permitted.
Correct.
Um, and it would give us an opportunity to talk to the Omaha City Council about what they've learned and to incorporate that into your further negotiations and the crafting of the RFQ. I also wanted to, to clarify, 'cause I, I, I understood the rules at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln campus a little differently. And I've just gone to their website to confirm that the only prohibition they have on electric scooters is that, that they too are not used on campus sidewalks. So they are still allowed on campus, just not on the sidewalk.
I believe they would be allowed on the streets that run through campus.
Right.
But those streets belong to us anyway.
Correct.
Not the campus, they don't belong to campus.
Understood.
Okay. I will withdraw my motion to delay.
Do I have to do anything? I seconded. You just sit there quietly and we can move on?
I think we can move on.
Okay.
Is that, Teresa, I have to defer to you.
Yes, we can move on.
All right, so I, is there any further discussion? None? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the amended resolution.
Amended ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, ordinance, yes.
Yes. McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Next then is item six C, amending title ten of the Lincoln municipal code entitled Vehicles and Traffic by amending chapter ten point oh two definitions to add a new section numbered ten point oh two point one two five to define electric scooter. Introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Introduced by Bowers, seconded by Showb. Any discussion?
This kinda answers my question earlier about the, yeah, about the wheelchairs and other devices, right? Sorry, I got a little hit of myself.
And we do have a motion to amend number one to accept a substitute ordinance. And the substitute ordinance is to clarify the intent to designate electric foot, foot scooters as motor vehicles.
So moved.
Second.